Okay, good evening, everyone. And I want to let everybody know that tonight's work session and business meeting is being recorded. So, welcome to the March 10th Business Meeting and Work Session of the Rochester School Board. Delighted to have everybody here this evening. And we're gonna jump right in. So we have roll call, Michael. How's Michael doing? There he goes. Alright, I'm here, Wana.
I'm here.
And Grant?
Here.
And we have Neil?
Present.
And Kim?
Here.
Okay. Right, at this time, we'll go to the flag salute. Everybody, please join me in the flag salute. Actually, it's great when it's up on the screen.
John, if you just give me a second, I will project the flag.
Yeah, I like when it's on the screen. That's wonderful.
Justin, I'm gonna need you to stop, share.
Go ahead.
Is it, is it there now?
Yep, it's there now. Alright, join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it's... I just messed up. Must be nervous. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sorry about that, everybody. About first time I've done that in years. Okay, next, we have a public input. And I, Sean, I have one letter to share. Do you have any others?
No, John, I don't have any letters received.
Okay, I will read this letter, share it with everyone. This was sent by Karina and Jason Watt.
John, if you don't mind, would you like to have anybody else in the audience that would like to make public input sign up at this time using the chat?
That is excellent, Kim.
Okay, so your name, and then if it's an item pertaining to something on the agenda, you would put number one, and if it's not an item on the agenda, you put number two.
Okay, Dear John and District Representatives, The challenge is that not every student in Rochester, in Rochester has access yet to in-person instruction every day, full-time, five days a week. The data is clear from the American Medical Association to our local doctors' offices and confirmed by educational districts across this great nation. While there is considerable educational growth to be proud of, achieved during remotely learning, nothing can replicate the benefits of in-person instruction across the following categories for children: academic growth, physical, mental, and socially emotional health. Therefore, the RSD Board of Directors, school administrators, and community cannot rest until we have collaboratively achieved this goal. Each student in Rochester, in Rochester has equitable access to in-person instruction every day, full-time, five days a week. One of the unfortunate impacts of the COVID-19 and the implementation of COVID-19 policies within Thurston County has the creation of inequitable access to in-person instruction for the Rochester students during the 2021 school year. The implementation of guidelines from OSPI and the Thurston County Health Department resulted in school leaders having to pick select groups of students based on academic levels, educational labels, or parent employment to receive twice the access to in-person instruction while leaving the rest of Rochester students and families without equitable access. This must be remedied immediately. Rochester must afford all Rochester students, regardless of academic level, educational label, or parent employment, equitable access to in-person instruction, which means, under the current hybrid model, all Rochester students and families must be given the choice to attend in-person four days a week, while continuing to honor parents who desire to access education through the remote learning model. Where do we go from here? What should our long-term goals be as a community and the district which remains the heart and soul of Rochester? We believe the long-term objectives as defined by the start of the 2122 school year should be the following: Every student in Rochester has equitable access to in-person instruction every day, full-time, five days a week. Return to the traditional in-person instructional model pre-COVID, embracing absolutely, embracing absolutely as appropriate the very best achievements attained during the distance remote learning model. Three, Implement three-foot social distancing within our schools. As experts from Harvard's University TH Chan School of Public Health have determined, social distancing in schools should be reduced from six feet to three feet. And districts across our nation who have dared to lead on this issue and open in-person instruction with reduced social distancing of four to three feet have given us the evidence to prove this is both safe, necessary, and attainable. Why must we, as a community, and you as school leaders, achieve these targets by the start of 2021 school year? These targets must be actualized in order to prepare students for lifelong learning, rewarding careers, and productive citizenship by both the community and district leaders embracing accountability, adaptability, and academic excellence for all Rochester students. Sounds familiar. It is our mission and absolute responsibility as educated professionals and leaders to live what we teach, to base our actions and decisions on evidence-based practices and prioritize equitable access to education for all Rochester students above all other needs. How do we do this? We, community members, in collaboration with RSD leaders, must take action. Every action between now and the start of next year must be to, must lead to the targets identified above. RSD administration does this by becoming advocates of action and rally, as many Thurston County District administrators and likewise with the RSD School Board members, rally Thurston County Boards and Directors to take action in the fall and reduce social distancing in our schools from six to four feet or less, regardless of whether Thurston County Health official guidelines remain at six feet. If we stand together as communities, the district leaders on this issue, we can actualize the change without being defunded despite that threat. Our districts across the nation have proven that they made the change and were not defunded. They made the change, and the students are attending school safety without incidents. Our RSD leaders must also pause to consider funding sources that weigh the benefits of funding with that of our community's priorities and primary need of education, educating all Rochester students equitably. If the funding source requires our district leaders, administrators, and the boards to compromise on the later, the latter equitable access to in-person instruction, then we must have strength to refuse those funds and preserve and persevere until we identify other funding sources. The most challenging decisions before us will always infer risk, and we must not compromise our commitment to evidence-based practices and equitable... And we must not compromise our commitment to evidence-based practices and equitable access to in-person instruction in order to take the less risky path. We, as a community, will continue to lobby at the legislative, state, and local level for the three targets identified above. In the words of a few wise leaders, "The time is always right to do what is right." On this next quote, I so believe in. I love this quote. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in the moment of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Love that. Martin Luther King. "The only place success comes before work is in the dictionary," Vince Lombardi. "Men don't follow titles, they follow courage." "I tell ye true, liberty is the best of all things. Never live beneath the noose of a civil halter. If you lead, we will follow," William Wallace. Together, we can do this. Every student in Rochester, equitable access to in-person instruction every day, full-time, five days a week. Sincerely, Karina and Jason Watt. That is a fantastic letter. Thank you very much. I do want to make one comment, especially since it's such a great letter. I was meeting with Kim Frye in her office the other day, and I saw on her whiteboard something that just, you know, went straight to my heart. And it said in very big, bold, large letters, it said, "Every student, every day." And that made me really happy to see that on her board, that every morning she comes in, she sees that. So onward.
John, I've got two, two more people that have signed up.
That's what I was gonna ask.
First person is Carrie Wallace.
Carrie Wallace, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here tonight asking that you take action and provide all kids in the district equitable access to in-person instruction four days a week. The hybrid model is not consistent across the grade levels and does not provide our kids with the stability and normalcy that they need and deserve. Teachers are giving it their all, but this model does not allow them to meet the wide range of needs their students have. We have worked through online schooling, schedule changes, and technology issues for too long. It's time to move forward and bring the kids back in person four days a week. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Very much appreciated.
The other person that signed up is Amelia.
Amelia?
Thank you so much. Thank you. I don't, I didn't write anything down or anything, but I just believe that these kids are getting put through too much and that the different ranges on how teachers are teaching or lack of teaching is putting our kids farther and farther behind. I have a fifth grader and a junior in high school, and that's totally dramatically different for each of them. Oh, and, oh, it's Amelia Mendez, sorry, Justin. And these kids that are independent learners and stuff, yeah, they may be moving forward and stuff, but what about these kids that aren't independent, don't know how to do what they're doing? And we have teachers that are connecting to Zooms, not teaching, giving them assignments, and pretty much just sitting there the whole time. And if you have a child that is not one of those people that is willing to raise their hand and pretty much call themselves out, they're gonna just sit there behind and keep getting farther and farther behind, and we're gonna be moving these kids forward. And it's, it's not doing them justice, it's not doing our future justice. It's just not helping anybody at all. And that's all I have to say. Get these kids back into school at least four days a week. If we're gonna do, kind of, you know, at least four to five days a week, please get these kids back to school. They need it. Thank you.
Thanks, Amelia. Well stated.
John, I've got one more. Lindsay Baker?
Oh, Lindsay, go ahead.
I'm actually speaking for someone that can't get on. Her name is Patty Brown, and she just wanted everybody to know that she has a six-year-old special needs child, and her child was forced to wear two masks at the primary school today. And her child has already had a bacterial bronchitis from masks in December. And so, something needs to be done about children being forced to wear two masks. She couldn't get on the Zoom, so she asked me to say something for her. And that's it.
Thank you, Lindsay. Yes, that will be looked into. And do you?
It already is being looked into.
Okay. Oh, so no emails need to be exchanged or contacts or anything?
I've been in communication with the family already.
Oh, cool. As always, step ahead. Any others, Justin?
I don't have anybody for this part of the public input.
All right, okay. Next up, we have additions, deletions to the agenda, and we have two. A addition, School Board Meeting Schedule under 5C, and expenditure for projectors under 6C. Do I have, do I hear a motion to approve the additions, deletions to the agenda?
So, most?
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, we'll go on to the consent agenda, where we have minutes, vouchers and payroll, retirement, resignation, and fall sports contracts. Does any board members have any questions about any of the items under the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, I'll hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
This is what I'll move forward.
Okay, wanna moves? Do I hear a second?
I will second. This is Neil.
Okay, Neil seconds. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, under Old Business, 5A, School Reopening.
Is everyone able to see my screen?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so just an outline of the topics I'm hoping to cover with you tonight. And status of our reopening plan progress that the board approved last week. And so I'll go over that. A quick update from Dr. Abdal Malik from this week. And discussion of the progress we've made towards the expansion of on-campus instruction and some more information about the advocacy that continues around setting up the conditions to make it possible for all students to be on campus. So, the good news is, we received word yesterday that our school reopening progress report has been approved, as notated here. And so that allows us to now start accessing the federal ESER emergency relief funds, which will become important as we get further down the, the presentation and I talk about the expansion. So that was great news to get that approved. And just a quick report from my meeting this morning with Dr. Abdal Malik. Case counts in Thurston County are at 107 as of, I believe, yesterday's count. Our last meeting two weeks ago, the case count was 131, so we've continued to see decline. I'm most excited about the test positivity rate is down to 3%. And so, that is a huge accomplishment. So, the efforts that are being made throughout our community to, to mitigate the transmission is working, and so we appreciate everybody's assistance. And the other thing I wanted to notate is, I saw a glimmer of hope today from Doc, Dr. Abdal Malik in her willingness to advocate on behalf of the Thurston County School Districts at the Department of Health level for changes to the guidelines around distancing. That was the first time that we have heard her express that her willingness to advocate on behalf of the, the belief of Thurston County administrators that we can have students in our buildings at a distance less than six feet and have that be a safe experience for students.
What was that, Kim? What was that exact distance?
She did not say. She, she didn't mention the distance. And, you know, we've talked about the distance that is being used in other countries and other experimented with in other states, etc. And I hear a range between three and four and a half feet is most often referenced in those. She didn't, she didn't say a particular distance, but that she would advocate with the people that she has interaction with at the Department of Health level around that matter. So that was exciting news for, for us today. And on to the K3 Expansion Progress Report. We have a tentative start date for the expansion of students in grades K through three of April 12. And April 12 is the date following spring break. So it's the start of the fourth quarter. So a new, new term for students. We're able to make this happen as a result of engaging staff and using their creativity to figure out how do we put desks in all these oddly shaped rooms in a manner that allows them to be the appropriate six feet apart? But there's a little art to figuring out how to maneuver the furniture and take furniture, you know, unnecessary furniture out and maneuver the desks in such a way that students will have access to the, the learning materials. Hopefully, the, you know, a view of the board and things that are important for optimal learning to occur. And it does mean that we would access spaces that would typically not be where we would put desks within a room. So, you know, using the far reaches. So, it's, it's not what you would typically see. It's not the ideal. All the desks are kind of up close and have great vantage points. And there, there are places that are further back that aren't optimal, and so that they'll definitely need to be some things that happen in terms of increasing font size and when, when materials are projected. That is one of the things that's really gonna have to happen in order for people to be able to see from the back, back areas of the room. And it's my belief that a less than optimal vantage place to the board is still a better option than having kids at home. So, you know, there's, there's, there's gonna be trade-offs. This is not gonna be perfect. It's not gonna be ideal based on our classroom size, but working really hard for any, any family who wants to send their kids to school at least four days a week would be able to do that in April, based on the current trajectory of us getting through our to-do list of all the things that are involved in this.
So, we continue, we continue to overcome challenges, and that's what, that's what we all want, and that's what the community wants, so.
Yeah, and I think our, our district has a rich history of our staff being able to, to put their collective wisdom together and to work through problems. And a big, a portion of this is the ability to find additional teachers. And so that those jobs were posted, some interviews happened with a team of educators last week, and we are now preparing with your blessing. If, you know, I know you officially approve later on when you get names, but hopefully, there's continued support on behalf of the board to use those ESER funds that will be released now that we got our approval yesterday to hire some additional available staff to fill in where we need to make some new classrooms. And so that is the K3 Progress Report. Any questions about that portion, and then I'll talk about grades four and five?
How many will this? Okay, so I probably should ask this in a specific way. So, say we have K through three. We have 453 students, of which 375 students want to come back. So, are we gonna have 375 students back in class? Divided between A and B schedule, or what, what does that look like?
So, in this model, John, it's a perfect, a wonderful question. Thank you for asking it. In this model, it would have students coming back in, in the current length of day that they have now on their on-campus day, which is 45 minutes shorter than they had last year. But it's like, right now, if you're a blue kid, the length of day you're, you're at school on your blue day, it would be that same length of day, four days a week. And, but you would be coming, yeah, every one of those days, you would come to class. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, cuz I, it...
It's not a half-day schedule.
Yeah, cuz that...
Four days a week, a slightly truncated school day.
Yeah, cuz there's, there's been some confusion that, you know, that school district can say, well, we have all our school or all our kids back in school. Well, perhaps, but it's on, they're not in school five days a week, full-time. They're, you know, so that's, that's what I'm trying to get to the, get to the meat of the question.
If you don't, Michael, I'll take your question, and then you remind me, I want to talk a little bit about why that 45 minutes shorter day.
Okay.
So, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, Kim, it may relate to my question too, and I think you briefed us, but I've forgotten. Why four, not five? Is it, are we still...
We know that at least four. We're just still trying to figure out the details about, is five possible? But there's, there are some obstacles around busing. And our bus drivers right now are set up in four days a week. There's, there's some things that we'd have to overcome. And there's some training and preparation requirements that we need to fulfill that I'm not sure if they're possible if we expand to four days now. Of course, our goal for the fall would be all kids, five days a week. And in terms of the shortened day, the reason why that day is shortened by 45 minutes is it enables, it enabled us to take teachers who had previously been our specialists. So, these are our PE teachers, our music teachers, and we converted them into a general education classroom teacher at the start of this school year in order to have enough staff to serve the number of students that we, we had. We needed more staff because we knew about social distancing. And it, right away at the beginning. So, the 45 minutes early allows those teachers to have their planning time before or after the student day as opposed to having a rotation of teachers who aren't teaching during the day. So, in the past, if Mr. Mortensen, if you were a second-grade teacher, your planning time might be from 10 to 10:45. And in order for you to have your planning time during the day, your students went to PE, or they went to the library, they went to, to music. And right now, we don't have them in those places because those teachers are teaching as classroom, general ed classroom teachers. So there's no, there's no way to give planning time during the student day. So we had to truncate the student day, put all the teacher planning time outside of when kids are at school. So that's the rationale for reducing the 45 minutes. And I know there's been questions about that. Any other questions about K3? So we talked about, you know, we're gonna start at the youngest grades, and then we're gonna see how far we can work our way forward. And so, we'll be initiating conversations with classroom teachers in fourth and fifth grade at the end of this week about what's it going to take? Is it possible for us to expand to grades four and five still this school year? To expand them to four, at least four days a week. And there are a couple different factors that are at play here that make it more complicated than in K3. So, in, in grades K through three, most of our teachers were assigned 20 students or less. And so to get to the number of students who can fit in at one time in a classroom, in many of our classrooms, that's 18, 16 to 18 students. And so, when you have 20, and you can fit 16 to 18, that's not as many students that you have to find another place for in order to bring everybody on campus. And in grades four and five, class sizes are larger than 20. And so there's more kids that would have to... And so there's more kids that would have to be moved to another teacher. So it, one, it requires us to hire even more teachers to make that happen. And then the movement a lot of a lot of students that would have to change, like their teacher had been Mrs. Smith, and now we're going to farm four of Mrs. Smith kids out to this teacher. And so, you know, for actually, is it seven to eight students? Range in some classes that would have to go to another teacher to form all these additional class classrooms to to make a place for everyone. And so that is going to take us a little bit longer. The good news is that pool of candidates for hiring was richer than we had anticipated. And so we we believe that we have the potential to fill all the necessary positions. It means still finding space for them. We have some ideas for most of those, but it's going to take us a little bit more time to expand for four, four and five, because those challenges are greater. So that's our current progress report, trying to get K three underway. That that planning, we have planning committees, a steering committee at each of the buildings that is working on all the schedule changes and various aspects that will take to expand the number of days kids come back to school in grades K through three. And now we'll bring grades four and five into that discussion and figure out if we can pull this off. So
Yes, make a comment, please.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to share out also as we're looking at the expansion of K three and then moving forward to fourth and fifth. In special education, we also are looking at expanding our preschool time. Our preschool time has also been truncated because of the the difficulty with the young kids wearing masks and social distancing and that kind of thing. We've had them at school a shorter period of time. And as our a little bit older students have the opportunity to be in school more days a week, we are we're trying to do the same thing with our preschool kiddos, but still keep them safe. And then looking at special ed at the upper grades, we'll continue to look at ways to expand their ability to be on campus for the students that are choosing to have on campus instruction. So I just wanted to share that as well, just kind of the around the edges of this K five work.
Thanks, Laura.
I apologize for not having included that. So I really appreciate you chiming in with that additional information. Questions about grades four or five?
So you're going to cover through twelfth grade, right? So I think I'm going to save my answer or my question to the
Actually, I'm not. My my last expansion slide is through fourth and fifth grade. I I'd be happy to talk a little bit around, again, just the reminder of the challenges when we get to middle school and high school. It's a very different process. An example would be a rough calculation of our middle school would require up at least nine additional classroom spaces. And the teachers in the right endorsement areas, you know, somebody that can teach math and somebody could teach science and and what have you. And so that is a much greater challenge to pull off, and I don't foresee us being able to accommodate an expansion in grades six through twelve this spring with the current social distancing requirements. So really, I see the every kid in six through twelve being able to come to school every day next year is is predicated on a reduction, a reduction down to three or four, four and a half. I think if we had that type of reduction, we can find a way to accommodate.
So I don't, I mean, don't frustrating on I'll I'll just ask it. So if if there was a miracle and the state of Washington came to their senses and we could have kids back in school within three feet and have all the kids back five days a week, all day long. How long would that transition take from the way we have it now with all the desks spread out, with everybody spread out? I mean, is that, could we? Could we return to some normalcy? And again, providing if, you know, I I have no problem with with parents who want to have online learning at home. They want to keep their kids at home. Or, you know, to me, it's it's about choice, but could could that be done in a week's time? Would it take three weeks' time?
You know, John, I I don't have an an exact answer for you. I would say that I I can't imagine it happening within sooner than two weeks. And just the complexity of meals, transportation, revising schedules. I in my big holdup in answering you is I do not know the ins and outs of what kind of impact that would have in the secondary schedule. Meaning, would we have to would students have to change classes and be, you know, reassigned to different teachers for courses, something which is really challenging to do in the middle of a term? When, you know, you've had this teacher as your math teacher, now you have to switch and all those records that have to be transferred and all of that. So it can get really complex at the secondary level. There are a lot of details at every level, but it becomes particularly complex at the secondary level. The reason I I threw out the arbitrary two weeks was only because in the very early days of the pandemic, when there was this continual hope that any day there was going to be a light switch that turned on or off, and we would all magically get to go back to our normal lives. We were told by O S P I that we would be given at least two weeks to make a transition. So that's where I arbitrarily came up with the two weeks. It could likely take longer. Any other questions?
Kim, just I had a similar question, and I think you've answered it. It that the fourth quarter in my mind was sort of a magic point that if we can't get a change in the distance within the next week or two to make to be ready for the fourth quarter, it would be more difficult to change in the fourth quarter. But listening to what you're saying, it it's even complicated changing in the middle of a semester. That so it's not necessarily about the fourth quarter. It's about we're mid semester and trying to change, so.
Yeah, a midterm change is really challenging in in grade six through twelve.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Yep, go ahead, Kim.
All right, so this, I don't expect you to be able to read all this. This is just an example of advocacy that's happening from a state organization around reconsideration of what distance is appropriate for social distancing. And so this is the Washington Association of School Administrators. They sent this letter yesterday to Governor Inslee. This is an excerpt from that letter. So they sent it to Governor Inslee as well as the Washington Department of Health Secretary advocating that that we can come back at a with less social distance and do so safely. And they cite the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Harvard School of Public Health as their sources for their evidence of why we should be able to do this. And so their particular request is is three feet in this request. But a lot of advocacy continues to happen for this matter, as the research, there's there's more research that supports that, so.
Sure is.
We'll see what happens. The last thing I had was a meeting or two ago, I think maybe two. Mike Smith, high school principal, came and spoke about this potential need to change grading policy. So more research was done, and I'm here to report that no change to policy is needed and to to let you know what they would like to do. So high school, the the request is that high school students who do not, who did not master the essential learning standards for the first semester be allowed to be issued a no credit rather than an F until they can demonstrate mastery. Our policy allows that to happen, a no credit to be issued. And this would allow students to participate in mastery based credit options and then convert their no credit to a grade once they can demonstrate that they have those key concepts. The other thing to know about no credit is when you issue a no credit to a student, it doesn't impact their GPA. So this would be helpful to some of our students who are trying to apply for colleges right now who insurance rates will get adjusted on their car insurance. This was something that came up at a family meeting that that Mike had the other day with families. You're like, oh, my gosh, we just like need our insurance rates not to go through the roof. I will make my kid do the work that they need to do and master the the essential standards. And but this is to let you know that that the the policy as written would allow a no credit. And to see if you had any questions, I may or may not be able to answer those questions, but I will definitely take those back to Mike and let him know it to be in contact if anybody has any questions about or concerns about the use of a no credit grade mark in place of an F for the the first semester grades.
So before I ask my questions, Wana, questions?
I do, as a matter of fact. I was in the meeting yesterday with the high school parent meeting. And this was brought up. So my question is if a student had had an F, had the opportunity to bump their grade and their grade is a D, their grade is going to stay as a D. Correct?
I will write that down.
Okay.
You know, I I guess I don't want to assume.
Okay, because there's this one parent asked a question, and that's what exactly what she said. He goes, her child had an F and they worked really hard to bump that grade, and they got a D. So now on their GPA, it's going to stay as a D.
So this is talking only about Fs to no credit. So this wouldn't impact that situation?
Okay.
There there may be additional ideas coming forth to you in a future meeting about whether or not we should allow for any any other considerations around non F grades. For now, this would only impact a first semester F.
Okay. Yeah, because that's what the parent mentioned. She's like, well, my my child worked really hard to bring their grade and they still got a D, do they not? Can they get another opportunity to raise their grade? Because she knew that that was not her typical child's grades. But due to the circumstances, and they could not answer that question.
Yeah. I think more just more discussion and research and the the implications of this. So every time, you know, there's definitely a balance. We want to do right by kids and know that kids have had to endure some incredible circumstances. Every time we do one of these things, it is a workload impact for staff that has to be accounted for and taken care of. So we we definitely need to do some more more research about what would if if that would even be feasible for a a non F grade.
Wana, did you, did you talk to the parent and have the parent contact the teacher to see if the student could do something to raise that grade?
Principal Smith is going to look into it, and he made notes.
Okay. Because I remember when I was in school, if I got a D, then I'd go to the the teacher and, you know, I realized I graduated centuries ago. But I would go to the teacher and say, hey, you know, I I I don't want to get a D. I want to get my grade up to a C. What can I do? Extra credit, things like that? That the teacher would often say, well, but, you know, that's that's something that we'll have to look into, or Kim will have to.
That is a, teachers have some discretion when the term is still open. So during the existing term, since this is a closed term issue, so that was first semester and first semester grades have already been recorded and all of that.
Okay.
It wouldn't, that wouldn't really be feasible at this point. The individual teacher doesn't, wouldn't be able to actually even go into the system and make that change.
And then, Kim, I think I think also the the topic where it says until they demonstrate mastery, I don't think that was brought up. Because this is where the parent was wasn't, she didn't feel it was fair, where a passing grade, it's it's not graded. So once again, they can apply for scholarships for for sports. And if they versus they have a D on their on their grade, on their GPA. But I think there's a miscommunication then because Principal Smith mentioned that it would just, it would show a passing grade on their GPA versus until they demonstrate mastery.
Yeah, so it it actually, it just, it shows no credit. And so although the bottom line GPA isn't impacted, there is still an impact for students if they have to have a certain number of courses marked off before college would consider them. So in many cases, you know, you need to have certain things taken care of, and it would show that you haven't met that requirement yet.
So then they would have to do it.
It it doesn't impact the GPA, but they would still need to to finish a course.
Neil. Questions?
Yes. You know, equity, you know, we have we need to get the kids back in class. That's the bottom line. You know, you know, I'm listening to some about the credits and Fs versus a passing grade. And we're still trying to do this distance learning and you know, this with the younger kids. Do we have a set ratio per teacher versus the amount of children that are attending these classes at the I believe it was the K through three and then the fourth and fifth? I know it's, is it, because I thought there was like a ratio of one to fifteen. Has that been expanded to the overall of ability of the room to hold that many children? Or, you know, is it one to twenty, one to twenty five? Where are we at on that? And then, you know, the special needs kids, the ones that really have a harder time doing the things online. Are we making things available where they can have the opportunity to have access? You know, it's part of the equity, you know, and and it's just you know, the kids that really have troubles doing online studies, we really need to have them in there and, you know, and I'm sure these are pulling their hair out. You know, and and we hear the stories.
Absolutely.
You know, we got one, one a fifth grader that, you know, gets it done in two hours, and then we've got it an eighth grader that has to do all day at it. You know, I just just trying to make sure equity is happening in in the way we're doing things in our procedures. And and I know a lot of it has to do with the state level and O P S I and and what we're told we can and can't do. And I I really appreciate the letter we received today and I tried to do every part I can to try to get these kids back. We we need to have the kids back in school and done safely. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Grant? Oh, go ahead, Kim.
I didn't know if you wanted me to respond. Neil, it is based on the number of students who can be socially distanced within a classroom space. So there there's no set. You could, at one point, there was, you could only have up to fifteen. That is now been replaced with, once we hit that threshold, those thresholds of case counts. We are now able to to just as long as we can keep them at six feet, there's their desks at six feet apart. Then we're able to put as many into a space as that will accommodate. And Laura has been busy and her amazing special education staff have been busy in terms of our special education students. Like our general education students, it's it's not the same, and it's not enough. It, you know, it's not the same as every day for every kid. But based on a student's particular needs, their individual education plan is dictated the the amount of time in Is dictated the, the amount of time and the types of services that they're currently receiving. And so there's a, there's a variation. We have some kids who come on campus. Um, because of their particular situation, very limited amount of time and some kids come on camp, you know, less than the two days. That would be typically offered, but it's right for that child to come on campus one day a week. And and others who come on campus four days a week. So it's an individual team decision based on the students' needs. But I, but in all fairness, it's, it's like every other kid. It, it's, it's not ideal. It's not the every day for every kid.
Grant?
Thank you. Yeah, uh, on the uh, high school students who were issued no credit for first semester classes, then maybe they've been failing. Was that, so if, if a student was failing a class first semester, were they automatically issued a no credit? And so they had to request that?
No, this would be, this would be a, a transfer. This, this would mean we could take those Fs that are currently on their transcripts and switch them to a no credit.
Okay, and it uh, follow up there on, and it's, there's a time limit on that, right? They, they have to demonstrate mastery within this semester? This school year?
I, I have to look that back to um, some guidance from OSPI. Yeah, in, in. What cert, what's sticking out in my head, Grant, but I would have to confirm is that prior to graduation. They have to meet those graduation requirements.
Yeah, so seniors, except I just think about junior sophomores, maybe the same situation. There a time limit on that?
And you know, it's a different type of a problem with the ability to overcome more easily. If you had one no credit. As opposed to if you have six no credits, you might need some more time. And the type of mastery based options that would be available to, to um, to be able to get the credit. Will change over time. Like right now, we'll, we'll be putting, you know, lots of services and opportunities in place to try to get a whole bunch of these kids across. And at, at a certain point, you know, some of these kids may have to retake a course. Take an online, you know, Apex course or, you know, there are, there's multiple ways. And those options again will fluctuate based on staffing availability and. And you know, lots of factors, but I think that. The, I, I think the law would allow it to happen just anytime prior to graduation.
Okay, sorry, one more uh, nuance is, is, does it have to be a letter grade? So you know, passing is a D or, or is it, are there options for pass fail?
And there are legal options for pass fail, yes. We haven't, I haven't been a part of any discussion to, to transfer to a pass fail. And but that could be something that we consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Michael? Yeah, um, just following up on Grant's question there, I'm not sure if I understood. If, if you do, if the kids that failed the first semester, we have the opportunity to go in and change their F to, to um, no credit. Is that going to happen across the board? We're just gonna automatically do that? Or are we gonna reach out to each student and find out if that's what they want to have done?
I don't know.
Good question.
I would be happy to research that.
My concerns um, overall is, you know, it, it just. It kills me, just kills me to think that nothing is gonna happen until September of twenty twenty-one. And that we are gonna finish out this school year in an AB schedule with six feet social distancing. I'm, I'm getting a, a little bit cynic, I guess you could say about the, how slowly. Um, it's going forward. Uh, there are, there are twenty states in our union that are open. And have a, a full economy going and schools back. I will, I would be glad to anybody who wants to call me or email me. I will sit down with them anywhere in the Rochester area and debate the science behind COVID nineteen. Because. I find, other than politics, which school board is non partisan, we're not. It's not politics that we are here for, it's for the kids. But beyond politics, I find no reason why we cannot open our schools in Washington State. Like twenty other states across the nation. So I just, I hope that we all continue to talk to uh, the. Governor Inslee's office, to the Washington State Department of Health, to the Thurston County Health Officer. And try to make them understand the letter today was, was great. But uh, you know, I, I have, I have no, no fears of sitting down with anybody to debate the science. And uh, I would, I would welcome that. And I also would welcome any family that wants me to see how their, their child zooming is going. I'll do that. So I am really encouraged by Wassa and what they're trying to do. And um, let's, let's continue to fight the good fight. And uh, I just, I really want to apologize to the citizens of the Rochester School District. It's not the fault of our teachers or our administration. Because we are pushing back and trying to get kids back in school, but keep fighting the good fight. Go ahead, Kim.
I, I believe that that is my last um, slide and hand over to Maggie. So Maggie is going to share some student growth um, data with you. And this will give us a, a better indication of how our students are progressing this year and the comparison to, to previous years.
Maggie, you gotta un, unmute.
How many times have I like been on Zoom in the last year and I still forget that? So um, I'm gonna talk about our iReady data and. Justin, can you not share that screen so I can share my screen? Thank you. Um, I think I caused that just since I'm sorry. So uh, so I'm gonna share some uh, iReady benchmark data. So iReady is the assessment that we give kindergarten through eighth graders uh, that we assess three times a year. This time we actually did it four times. We will, we will do it four times um, on both reading and math. It is uh, data that I, I shared with you before, but as a reminder, uh, iReady is a, an adaptable assessment. So it is designed for students to get half the problems right and half the problems wrong. Because what it's trying to do is gauge what level a student is performing in reading. And what grade level student is performing in math. So uh, it's not a set like I'm a first grader, I'm gonna take this test on first grade standards. And I'm gonna show if I'm, you know, if I'm mastering those or not. It, it shows it in a roundabout way, but a student that is uh, performing above grade level. It will receive assessment questions and try to gauge exactly what level they are on and vice versa. If they were, if they're performing below level. So it gives us a unique perspective as far as being able to look at where our students are performing academically. Uh, and as well as uh, how our students are on track for typical growth throughout a year. Uh, iReady actually is, is a normed assessment uh, by a million students. And so there are several, several students all throughout the country that take the iReady assessment. And so it is a normed based, there is an ability to be normed based on that. It is a criterion reference test for you data people out there, but uh, but we do have the ability to norm some results and to norm growth. So if we uh, look at our winter benchmark, which it says winter, we actually gave it a little bit late. Because we wanted to make sure that we were able to give it to students in person, especially K through five. We, our fall and our midfall scores were given remotely for most of our kids. So, but our winter was given in person. So this is uh, how our students performed based uh, by grade level. So there are five colors, mostly five colors. The uh, blue are students that performed uh, mid or above grade level. So if I am a third grade student, I'm performing at the mid third grade or higher. Uh, green is early or on grade level. Yellow is one grade level below. Pink is two grade levels below. And then the red is three or more grade levels below. So typically in the winter, we are hoping to see students in the blue or the green. So that is, that, that is what we're hoping. Obviously, as you look at the younger grades, uh, there is very little ability to be three or more grade levels below. You can be, you can score pre-kindergarten or pre-emergent on that. So that's why you do see some kinders with a one grade level below. And you'd be like, well, wait a minute, there is no grade level below. There is a pre-emergent. What uh, we, we were able to do is look at how these cohorts of kids performed last year. So if you look at these red lines, this is what our students were performing last year at this time. In their previous grade level and where the blue and the green were. So if we look at third grade again, for example, so this is obviously where third grade is uh, right now. Which is, yeah, the twenty-three and the twenty-one percent at green or blue. Last year, when this cohort of students were in second grade, that green and blue bars went down to this red line. So if you look conversely at fourth grade, when this cohort group was in third grade. Their green and blue bars went down to this red line down at the bottom. So that should give you an idea as far as how students are performing right now. And then how they did last year on their previous grade level standards. So that's reading. Here's the same uh, concept for uh, math, math uh, standards for winter benchmark. Again, uh, the blue and the green, our students are performing are on or above grade level. One grade level below, two grade levels below and so forth. And again, if we were to look at what these cohorts of students did in the previous grade, you can see. So again, to walk over, for example, this second grade as first graders, their green and blue went down to this red line. Approximately this red line, I eyeballed some of those lines, so. So we are also able to look at growth. So a- as I had mentioned, even though iReady is a criterion reference assessment, they do norm growth. So they look at what typical growth would look like by a grade level. So they take, they did this back in twenty seventeen was the last time that they normed growth for iReady. And so they looked at all the kids in a certain grade level and said typically from fall to spring. This is how many points a kid scores. This is how much growth they make in a year. So they're able to norm this based on fiftieth percentile of growth, seventy-fifth percentile, twenty-fifth percentile of growth. So uh, we, so when we look at that annual typical growth, we are hopeful to, we would love to see it between fifty and sixty percent. Because we're about halfway through the year. So to get to that hundred percent of typical growth by the end of the year. About winter, we would like to see fifty or sixty percent. This year for reading at the primary school, we are at thirty-seven percent of achieving our typical growth. Now, how that is distributed, you can look at here, which is what percentage of our students at the primary school. Have made it to a hundred percent and then have uh, all the way down to which percentage of students who have had less than twenty percent growth. Are actually nineteen percent or less uh, growth. Keeping in mind that the goal is for every student to get to that hundred percent of typical growth. That will, that will uh, allow a student to tread water. So for example, if they came into third grade, just barely at grade level. They would leave, uh, enter fourth grade just barely at level. For kids that are below level or come to us below, we would want to see an accelerated growth from them. But at the very minimum, we want to see what that typical growth would look like. So we're not losing, losing ground. Comparatively, uh, at the primary school for reading last year. Our typical growth was uh, on target, what we would like it to, to be between that fifty and sixty percent. And this is what our distribution looked like. We do always tend to have, uh, we, we, it's, it's typical that we would have a uh, percentage of students that make little to no growth. Uh, but it is a little bit more evenly distributed last year and uh, as at this point last year than it was this year. So that's the primary school for reading. The primary school for math looks similar with thirty-four percent uh, as our median for typical growth. And then this is the distribution of students. Compared to last year. Fifty-nine percent and then our tip, our distribution of typical growth. So that's the primary school. Grandman reading, this is our typical growth, which is twenty-seven percent. Our median is twenty-seven percent with our distribution. Compared to last year. This is our math. Typical growth and our distribution compared to last year at this time. Rochester Middle School, um, you're gonna see some big red, which is incomplete testing. So if you look here, you'll notice that there are four hundred ninety-six students that we have. Uh, uh, enrolled, obviously at the middle school, only three hundred and forty-three have taken this assessment. So I did speak to Will about, you know, there, there are a variety of factors. First of all, you know, he's roughly about twenty-five percent of his students are remote learning. Um, and that's really difficult to get them to finish that test. So I, I, I put this as a caveat as far as the parallels. This growth looks really good, but uh, it, yeah, we have to, we have to keep in mind that this is some incomplete testing. Uh, this is typically what was happened last year. Uh, middle school is, that's, that's very typical as far as to have polls. You either have kids that are growing a lot or kids that are not, not super caring about that assessment. And, and then so math, so like I said, I, 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 I think it's important to, to, to look at the data, to look at where we are. But I do want to caveat that we are missing close to a little over a hundred students in this middle school testing. So I, it's, one, it's super important to look at where we are so we can begin to, to look at our next steps. So what, what are we going to do? I mean, it's, it's one thing to say, okay, this is where we are. So, so what are we gonna do now that we have an idea of where our students are performing? And there are three things that, that I think we're, we're working on and continuing to work on. The first of all is increased engagement in iReady. Not only is iReady uh, an assessment. There's also an instructional piece as well, based on targeted skills. And I think, you know, it, it is a computer adapted program. But the, the magic of that really isn't, let's just get these kids on this computer and have it teach itself. Because I think that, that, that's proven not to work. What the magic is, is a teacher providing feedback to that student as they're working through those lessons. And, and using that as teachable moments on these targeted skills that kids are showing that they have not reached mastery. And we're hopeful that uh, as we are seeing our minutes increase in, in iReady, the active engagement minutes. Um, some progress monitoring tools that uh, we will be able to come back in the spring. And show you some, some uh, additional data that will hopefully look at us accelerating the growth past what we have right now. Obviously, uh, as, as Kim had mentioned, the return to in-person learning as much as possible. Is, is, is another step to, to uh, to dealing with uh, our, our stunted growth in, in iReady. And continuing work on essential standards and proficiency, that, that's something that, that our teachers have worked really hard on identifying as a grade level. What, what are the actual essential skills that they need in order to move on to the next grade level? And we are beginning to start talking about summer learning opportunities in per, person learning. And I put this caveat in here because you hear this term a lot called learning loss. And I, I, I wanna just, you know, kind of frame, frame this conversation a little bit. That there really is no learning loss. Once you've learned something, you don't really lose it. What we have lost is uh, opportunities for in-person instruction. So one of the things that we are hoping to do this summer is gain additional opportunities. For students to have some in-person instruction and some in-person learning. And, and so those are things that K through twelve, we are. And, and so those are things that K through 12, we are looking at, at how we can do that and how we can serve as many kids as possible. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Board members? Anybody, anybody chime in? I'm, I'm. You know, it's, it's, it's difficult to see how, what kind of education the kids have got this year. And there again, please Rochester staff, teachers and everybody, you guys are the, are the best. And I'm, I'm not, I'm talking about the situation, not personal. But, and I don't, I don't know if this is more for Kim to answer too. But if these, these kids K through 12, is it, are we going to get to the end of the year? And just say, well, you know what, kids? It was a bad year. We had to keep you all out of school and you didn't have the best learning year, but we're all passing you on to the next grade. Because there's really, I mean, we can't keep you back. So it's, it's kind of a dilemma in that, you know, some, some kids really excel and some kids don't. And so we get to the end of the year. How are we, how are we gonna, how are we gonna treat this?
So I can just very simply state to you, John, right now that this will be a multi-year recovery process. So in, I realize that there are some of our kids who are seniors. And, and this will impact our, our kids who are at the end of their K-12 education differently than it will at the beginning, those who are in the beginning stages, our kindergartners, our first, second graders, et cetera. But we are going to have to take not just Rochester School District, but schools across the world are having to take a multi-year approach to how do we help fill in those gaps of skills that kids would have normally acquired that they don't have? Do I think kids have acquired some skills that, that they have now that they would not normally have gotten? Yes, but they, it doesn't mean, you know, they have tech skills like we have never had before. And there's some definitely some things that they've learned that they, they wouldn't have had if we didn't have COVID. But there are nonetheless some essential skills at every grade level that kids, it's going to take more time for them to acquire those. And so it does mean us looking at, at curriculum differently from grade to grade and the multi-year approach to try to fill the gap because it's not as easy as like over the summer.
Yeah.
Somehow filling it up.
And we're gonna, we're gonna continue to keep the same standards that we've had from every year. So that even though they, the grade that they're presently in, they, it may not have been that great of a year.
Correct.
When they get to the next grade, those standards are still going to be there. We're not going to say, well, since, you know, in the past grade, it didn't go well. We're gonna let you slowly catch up. And you know, if you, if you don't graduate until your 13th or 14th year, that's fine. So.
Yeah, I don't know about that piece. We'll, we'll see what the, you know, the state ends up doing. But the state sets those essential standards for each grade level. And I have heard no talk about those being adjusted, but us having to find ways to help support kids who didn't have complete mastery of this year's content. Because, you know, it, it wouldn't make sense that we would do anything radical, like keep them all on the grade where they're at. You know, that, that doesn't make sense. So we're going to have to find ways to, to fill the gaps over time.
Okay.
This is Neil had a question about the I ready testing. I know that Rochester is using this. Is this also being used in other districts throughout the state? And do they have similar numbers to ours? Or are we doing better than other school districts in the state? Do you guys have any of that information? Thank you.
Excellent question.
Yes. So I ready is widely used, is not used by every district in, in Washington, but it is widely used throughout all parts, parts of, of the, the state. This, that, this is a phenomenon. I think there's always been, been districts that have used it. But I would say in the last three or four years, it's really, it's really exploded to where they, they hold professional development opportunities here in Washington, just for Washington teachers and, and districts. I don't have, you know, how other, other states and other school districts in Washington are performing on this. It's, it's something that I probably can, can find you. Not immediately. It's something I could ask curriculum associates who makes I ready or, and administers it, if we could put, if they are, they could put together some data as far as Washington school performance during this year. So we could look at Washingtonians as, as, as well as students. They're, they're pretty responsive to when I ask for requests for data or, you know, how, how things are doing. My guess is that will probably take some time. But if that's something that, that we're interested in, I, I, I think they would be more than happy to do that for us.
Thank you. Yeah, it's just rather depressing seeing those numbers where we're testing at. And I understand we don't have a complete listing. But I assume other districts are in a similar position and involved under the same COVID restrictions statewide. So yeah, I would love to see some parallel information from some of these other districts. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
No, no problem. I'll make a phone call tomorrow.
Go ahead, Kim.
That concludes the school reopening update.
So in, in closing, in the school reopening update, I, I want to make sure that community understands that we are really, we're really trying to push, but we need, we need communities help too. Because the, the administration, the teachers, we're all trying to get as many kids back in class. But you know, we need to be brave and I'd be, I'd be more than willing to, to stick my neck out and be one of those, one of those people that are storming the, the beaches to, for our kids. So just keep up, keep up the fight to get our kids back in school. And call, call your board members, email your board members. Keep your thoughts in their minds. All right. Next, we have the purchasing resolution. No, wait, assignment of teachers, forgive me. Assignment of teachers. Go ahead, Kim.
All right. Sorry, my, my screen moved just a little bit. I need to give, if you would just give me one second. Sorry, it, it logged off, so I have to re-authenticate my connection. And I don't know if one of you can, basically it's the approval of a revision that allows.
I have it, I have it here, Kim, if you want me to.
Thanks for filling in as I get my connection read.
It's a resolution 20-12, a third revision. And it's approval of assignment of teachers to classes other than their areas of endorsement. So this is basically a resolution that has a lot of whereas's that started and then a way for our signatures. But then there's attachment A, if everybody would look at attachment A, it shows those people that their location, their last name, first name, their assignment, certificate, number of periods and their current endorsement. And then it shows, you know, what they're going to be teaching in. And there's RHS Bryce Meldrum in AP Physics is a new addition.
So the, thank you, John. I was able to re-authenticate and get back into the system. So as you had mentioned, it really, the board has previously approved everyone who's not highlighted. And this is the addition of the one teacher mentioned ability to teach AP Physics course.
Question, board members? And, and really actually, a, a good, a good statement is, does all board members understand, understand this and, and why we're doing this? Because I, you know, a lot of you have just been thrown in to your first year of school boarding right at the beginning of COVID-19. And I, my heart goes out to you, Neil and Wanda. And Grant's had a couple of years, but still it's right into the fire. So please ask if you have any questions. Okay, hearing none? Do I hear a?
Did, Wanda, did you have a question?
I was just going to say, it's kind of what you had mentioned earlier when that shortage of the day for schools, that 45-minute gap was because like a PE teacher has to prepare. That is actually not, a PE teacher has to prepare their class for, for students.
So a little bit like that. In this case, in this particular case, the teacher has a chemistry endorsement, but is teaching AP Physics class. So even though they have a background in science, Washington State certification says that you're supposed to have a physics endorsement. However, with board approval, physics, AP Physics class would be an appropriate assignment for somebody who has that endorsement. But we would only be able to do that with your approval so that you know that we're, we're having a physics class being taught by somebody who has a chemistry endorsement, not a physics endorsement.
Physics, okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is Neil. I had a question.
Go ahead, Neil.
So these assignments, these are all certified teachers, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they, they do have an understanding of the classes that they're, they're to be teaching.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I'm looking at the list now. I had to re-log back into Kim.
Yeah, if it says idle too long, it does that.
Yeah. Okay, I, I understand. I get it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve resolution 20-12, assignment of teachers unendorsed, third revision?
This is Neil, so moved.
So Neil moves. Do I hear a second?
Michael second.
Hey, Michael seconds. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. 5C. We have the school board meeting schedule revision. And if you bring that up, you'll see that there is revisions to our calendar for school board meetings.
So this revision, it just reflects the upcoming board training. And so we have board training on the 15th and the 25th. And so it just is reflected here on the calendar now.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the 2021 school board meeting schedule revision three?
So moved.
Hey, Grant moves. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Wanda seconds. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hey. All right, then we go on to new business. 6A COVID student survey.
So Justin is going to take us through this one?
John, did, did you want Michael to speak to this or do you want me to go ahead?
Well, if I, if you don't mind, I, I would like to start.
Go ahead.
I, I really appreciate this and, and you know, I, I really appreciate how this went because it really shows that with some patience and wanting to have wisdom and knowledge that it's important to, to go through these things. When I first saw this, it was like, what? And so as I, as I read through it more, I understood it better. And then Michael Langer had a huge impact on me, helping me understand it. So Justin, maybe you should go first and then I'll have Michael comment.
All right, so the, the COVID student surveys, I, I almost wish state of Washington wouldn't call it that, but it, it has more to do with social, emotional, some perceptions. And it mimics many of the questions that the Healthy Youth Survey that we typically have every other year would, would have had in it. And but, so what, what we have here is an anonymous survey that we can give our students and data will be provided back, back to us toward the end of June. So we can use that moving forward. So no, no names are collected with students. Students don't even have to answer all the questions. They can answer the ones that they want to answer and they can skip over the ones they don't want to answer. There's, obviously there's a little bit of demographic information to be collected at, at the, at the front end. But some of the sample, sample questions. Let me grab that really quick. I've got too many screens here. So a couple of sample questions. When, when school is online, do you feel safer from bullying than when school is in person? Under the area of like hope and support, are there adults that you can turn for help and support if needed? So we're really trying to, trying to get some information from, from, from students, secondary students, this is only in 612. And so to help us do some planning for the fall. And the other thing, I think, the, the thing about participating in some of these state surveys is it also allows our, for, for us to be able to use, use data. So I know like information from the Healthy Youth Survey is used by partners that we have, like Roof uses Healthy Youth Survey to help them apply for grants and whatnot. Also, I know in the, in the past, some data that comes out of surveys like this is, is also one of the ways that we were able to get grants. So we can offer health, mental health services at the high school, middle school through True North and ESD and through, through some of those grants. And so it is important to get this kind of information from students because it does help our community in general by collecting this information with some other agencies that we work in a third-party association with. So all.
I tell you the quest, the question, except for a couple of how you currently identify yourself and which of the following best describes you. These questions are really important, especially during this time of COVID. And I've, I mean, to be able to do this survey and get a big return on the COVID questions, I think is, is really important. So, Michael, you helped me so much this afternoon. Help me out again.
Sure. I, I just, it's really nice to hear Justin talk about it. And John, for yourself to refer to the importance as well. This survey really started, or a version of it started back in 1988, just talking about trying to get a sense from young people what their use patterns were, quite honestly, around drugs and alcohol. Then eventually those risk factors that lead them to using drugs and alcohol and tobacco and other products and so forth. That went on until the late 90s when it combined a drug and alcohol survey with a Department of Health survey. So we weren't bothering the schools twice. We've collected data all together. So in addition to alcohol and drug questions added in were things about our kids eating, eating vegetables. Are there, are they exercising? All those kinds of health-related questions. And then later on, the substance abuse and mental health divisions came together. And so we started asking more questions around mental health promotion and depression, anxiety, suicidality, things of that nature. So it really has grown into a comprehensive survey. It's done every two years. Seasons matter. This is one of the things I talked to John about earlier today is that part of the reason that we're doing it this, I, I should say the fact that I work with the healthcare authority, with the Division of Behavioral Health and Recovery. And so I've been involved in the survey since it, it started back in the 80s. And, and, and part of the reason we're doing it in the spring is because of COVID. And we can't call it the Healthy Youth Survey because kids' experiences or students' experiences differ on season. So when you ask what their perceptions, what the risk protective. So when you ask what um, their perceptions, what the risk protective factors are, what um, the. Prevalence uh, uses and that, that kind of thing, it does matter that you ask in the fall every two years. As opposed to fall one year, spring the next and so on and so forth. So um, we couldn't do it in the fall. Because of COVID, we just couldn't get our head, heads wrapped around doing the healthy use survey in the fall. And so, but we did have some resources available and we did wanna get a snapshot during this COVID year. Uh, how um, this has impacted the mental health of young people, how this has impacted their drug and alcohol experimentation and so forth. As well as the other health-related issues and in bullying and the things that John brought up and some of the questions are uh, Justin did. And so we, I'm with you, Justin. I'm not sure calling it the COVID survey is the best way to put it. It's really is a um, healthy use. Survey light, if you will, uh, done in the spring. It won't have any uh, trending ability. Have a look at, so how do we last year versus this year? You really can't compare it so much. Uh, but it will give a, a snapshot of, of what our young people are facing. And what i- in turn, we like to say what the community is facing, because we happen to do this survey in the schools, but it really is about the um. The experience that young people are having in the communities which they live. So um, anyway, I'm a, 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 obviously a big proponent of it. I think it does the things that Justin mentioned in terms of bringing in some additional resources, if we can secure them, it, it definitely uh. Allows you to name what the issues look like for your community. Um, but also hopefully sort of um. Shine some light on what our young people are facing. The classroom teacher may know, the school counselor may know, the school nurse may know, um, principals and so forth. Um, but for others, they may not really understand it until they see it. So I think the data really sort of. Um, allows us to do some local planning as well as some regional and statewide planning. We've, we've brought in more federal resources as a result and hopefully the communities have gotten more into them too. So. John, I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I don't know how far you want me to go with that.
Oh yes, no, I wanna ask everybody, um, if, if Grant, you have any questions on it?
No, th- thank you, Michael, for that overview. It's great.
Neil?
No questions at this time. Great explanation, Michael. Thank you.
Wana?
No, no questions. I'm glad it was uh, clarified. Um, just like you guys said, COVID, the top of the name COVID safe again, student survey. It's probably not, not the right word, but, but thank you, Michael, for explaining everything now.
Sure, I, 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 I failed to do something, guys. I wanted to give you a little snapshot. Three hundred and fifteen schools have signed up so far. Um, in the first two days, over five thousand students have taken the survey in the state. And uh, I guess we have until March twenty-second to register if we wanna do so and it has to be completed by the twenty-sixth. So. Anyway, it's a short window if you wanna take advantage of it and looks like a lot of folks are.
The, the, John, the other thing I wanna, wanna mention is that there will be an email communication that goes out uh, to all parents uh, about, about the survey and. Um, uh, like, like Michael said, there, there will be, we, we need to complete it by the twenty-sixth at this point of March. So.
And not all, I mean, they don't, it's not mandatory for kids to answer all questions. So, you know, that's, that's important. Yeah. And, and Michael, I gotta say, I really appreciate your counsel this afternoon.
Oh, thank you. Happy to.
So with that, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the COVID student survey? I think, Michael, you'd probably be appropriate to, or would that be a conflict of interest? I'll tell you what, I'll appro- I'll, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Grant seconds, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
On to six B, purchasing resolution. Who has that this evening? Is that a Justin?
I apologize that, to Justin.
Not this one.
No, that, I think this one's me, Kim.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Justin went so free to talk about it.
I apologize.
Justin spends enough money already.
Right. So this is actually a resolution. Um, it says it's declaring a state of emergency related to purchasing. Which sounds like it's a, a big huge deal, but what it really boils down to is the Essar money we're receiving is all federal. And there's very strict um, guidelines we have to follow regarding competitive bidding in different procurement rules. Well, we all know that you, if you find some Lysol wipes, you buy them as fast as you can. Uh, cause they're gonna be out of stock the next day. So we are finding that there are many um, cleaning products, various equipment pieces. Um, PPE that we don't have time to follow all those pro- federal procurement laws. Because we would run out of stock, because every school district and corporation in the country is seeking the same things. So by declaring a state of emergency, we are able to forego that procurement process. And we'll be able to purchase those things as we find them um, from there, any company we find them from. So um, it's not declaring a state of emergency that we don't have to follow any procurement. It's just when we find product and we need it, we can get it here, so we can keep kids on campus.
Cool. Questions, board members?
This is Neil, I have a question.
Go ahead, Neil.
I believe last year we had signed a contract with the company that was supposed to be, supposed to be providing the uh, things we were going to need to open up. Uh, they not been able to keep up with demand? Where did we get put on the shortlist again?
We have, that was with um, a neighbor in ESD and we did receive our initial uh, PPE order from them. But they are limited in what they're providing. So they're providing very basic things. Um, masks, some gloves, I believe thermometers. But there are things we found that we need beyond the bid that they used. Um, so we have. It's done a second order with them, but we are in need of more things.
Thank you for explaining.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none? Do I hear a motion to approve ru- resolution twenty-one oh one, emergency declaration?
This is Neil, so moved.
Okay, Neil moves, do I hear a second? I'll second that. All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay, this one's for Justin?
Yeah.
Yes, th- this, this one's me. Uh, the expenditure I'm asking for approval here is for thirty uh, classroom projectors. Um, this would be the last uh, thirty in a four-year process of replacing all of the projectors uh, across the district. Um, so this is, this is our normal cycle and then we won't start replacing mass projectors like this again for another four years. Um, so, uh, and this particular uh, model uh, is. I, I actually got a, a pretty good deal, almost falling off the back end of a truck kinda deal. Uh, so uh, we, we are saving some dollars, dollars here on these, on, on these projectors. So.
Justin, you always, you are so tight-fisted. You are always getting such great deals and. You know, we, we really appreciate it and I, you know, you, what you need to start doing is at. Like maybe per quarter at the end of the year, you need to say, not how much money you've spent, you need to say. I've saved the district this much amount of money, because it seems like sometimes you almost save more money than you spend. And that is really representative of a great job.
That's the goal.
Really, really appreciate it.
I pay taxes here, just like everybody else.
Uh, board members, questions? Okay, hearing none? Do I hear a motion to approve the expenditure for Troxel projectors?
So move.
Okay, all second, moved in second and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Justin. Thank you very much. Um, okay, uh, public input. What do we have for uh, public input as far as agenda item or um, items that are not on the agenda this evening?
I, I don't have anybody that has submitted their name for items not on the agenda. Do we wanna provide a minute to see if there's anybody that wants to add their name?
Well, since I talk so much, I'll give him a minute. Um. Appreciate it, board members, uh, school, uh, administration, school staff. And I really appreciate everything that you're doing. Uh, Dale Crockett, your picture is crazy. I like it. Um, the community, we, we need, we need to keep fighting. And I, and I tell you, it just, it, I'll restate it again, is it breaks my heart that. To think that we're gonna have to not have a lot of movement from Thurston County. Um, before June of this year. So we still, we still gotta fight the good fight and write the letters and, and. Let them know that we, we really need kids uh, back in the class and especially next year. Next year, we need to have. A pretty much regular year. I will respect, and I think that it's good for families. That have kids that need to have remote learning. To be able to have that option. But we, we need to get kids back in school for. Their mental health more than anything else. So with that said, anybody, uh, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, John, I uh, I appreciate what you're saying. What I heard Kim say tonight is that Dr. Abdal Malik is going to um, go on the offensive. In terms of advocating the um, smaller distances. Uh, between desks so that we can get more kids in. So if that, if that's the case, then. I'm not sure letters to the school board are um, you know. If we're gonna change our mind, cause we, I think folks hopefully know where our minds are at. Um, I'm not sure at this point if letters to Dr. Abdal Malik are gonna make a difference. What I'd be interested to know is who is going to make a difference. And um, you know. Do we send it to the Department of Health Secretary? Um, he's new. And you know, do we invite him to a board meeting? Do we, you know, what do we do in terms of getting his attention? If he's really the person that's directing the local health jurisdiction folks at this point, then it seems to me that's who the letter should be written to. And um, you know, if this community wants it as badly as um, we're hearing from them. Then loading up the letters, the emails, the texts, whatever, to get his attention seems to be the way to go. Um. Otherwise, I, I, I worry that we're losing time and we're just talking to each other. As opposed to directing to the person that can really make the, the call. So I'll stop with that.
Excellent, Michael. Thank you. Uh, Justin, anybody sign up?
No.
Okay, Kim, anything more?
No, just think, um, thank you board and thank you um, community and staff who were present tonight. And and I, I would, I would echo Michael's sentiment that um, the governor's office. And the Department of Health is really who needs the pressure at this point. Um, if you are, if you are of the belief that um, the data would support a safe. Safe distance of less than six feet, th- those are the two powers that be in terms of making that decision happen.
Agreed. Thank you, Michael. Okay, well, I'm gonna part with a quote from Martin Luther King Junior. And I'm glad that this quote, quote came up. The ultimate measure of a person is not where he stands in moments of comfort or convenience. But where they stand at times of challenge and controversy. Thank you all and we'll see you in a couple of weeks, if not in between.